Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Temple City Council for Thursday, January nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. I am not Mayor Dunn, and he is ill this evening, but I'm filling in, so if I make mistakes, you'll understand, so. Please rise as Councilmember Tim Davis leads us in the invocation, and followed by our pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Alan Delora.
Bow with me, please. Father in heaven, Lord, as always, we thank you for the blessings you've given us, Lord. Thank you for watching over us throughout this week. We ask that you continue to do that until we meet again. Lord, thank you for this opportunity to serve in the city council, be with everyone up here as we work toward making Temple a better place for all, Lord. We ask that you, that you guide us and that you watch over us as we make those decisions. Lord, thank you for the, just again, the opportunity to be here. Thank you for watching over us, Lord, and be with our loved ones, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is public comments, and citizens who desire to address the council on any matter may sign up to do so prior to this meeting. Public comments will be received during this portion of the meeting, and please limit your comments to three minutes. No discussion or final action will be taken by the city council. We have a couple of people that are signed up that may be here to discuss item number nine on the agenda. A couple of things on that item. Number nine has been withdrawn, and there will be no discussion or motion or action taken by the council this evening. If you'd like to go ahead and speak now, you're still welcome to, or if you want to wait till later on, we still will have a public hearing. First is Debbie Huey.
My name is Debbie Huey, sixty-two twelve Jupiter Drive, Temple. I'm here on item nine. I just wanted to voice my concerns. I understand that there's not going to be any action taken on that item this evening. To be certain, and so everybody in my neighborhood understands, for this to come back to the council, it has to start the process all over again and go through planning and zoning with whatever he proposes on the acreage that he purchased. Is that, is that understanding correct?
I believe that is correct, Ms.
Okay.
Brian's shaking his head back there.
So, does it start all over, go through the P and Z, and then it comes back to you, you gentlemen and ladies again, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Right. We're not real pleased with what he's proposed so far, so just so it's known that Jupiter Drive can't hold the traffic that he's proposing in that subdivision. The amount of houses, it's not capable of maintaining itself with that many cars that would possibly be driven, or even during the construction period. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Huey. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble reading this. Deidra?
Dean Chamber.
Dean Chamber, oh, it's Dean, okay. Thank you, Dean. Next is J.D. Zeppner.
Well, I guess I usually say hello, Mayor, but he ain't here. Well, Mr. Pro Tem, council entities, citizens and residents, my name is James D. Zeppner. I'm here to talk about tonight, the Temple newspaper. Few things, I've been coming here for thirty-four months now, and there wasn't one article that y'all haven't written about me saying what I have to say, voicing my voice of democracy. This ain't freedom of speech, this is democracy, this is my government, and y'all don't respect that. The reason why the newspaper, the Temple Daily Telegram, is a political, independent newspaper placing the public welfare above the interests of any party. Truth and decency are the guiding principles, and it's the daily determination to print the news without fear or favor. But I have to disagree with y'all. This is a democracy, and y'all are a political newspaper? No wonder my voice ain't being heard. My mannequin shot for my red, white, and blue campaign when y'all put that in there. Well, that was a conspiracy to defame my character by using Nikki Nicole Blackman, Marcus Hill in the Temple Daily Telegram. At the night of the Tea Party meeting debates, he sat there and took all kinds of pictures of me like that in my red, white, and blue. Well, there's a lot more to y'all. What I understand, y'all's newspaper is under democracy rules, laws, and orders, and since they are registered as a federal government, I am saying in front of my council, my government, my entities, and the citizens of residence, I want an investigation of my civil rights being violated by the Temple newspaper. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zeppner.
I don't have no problem with you, sir. I understand the round and round that you put in that political paper year after year. I understand it. I've been looking at it for four years, and this is going on my fifth year, fellas.
Next item on the agenda is proclamations and special recognitions. We'd like to recognize Mr. Wendell Williams, past Chair of the Board of Directors for the Temple Health and Bioscience Economic Development District. Mr. Williams. I told Mr. Williams a while ago that if he'd like to wait for the real mayor, I'd be glad to do that. Otherwise, I am very honored to be able to do this tonight. This is a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Temple, proclamation that whereas Wendell C. Williams served as the Chairman of the Temple Health and Bioscience Economic Development District, Board of Directors since its inception in two thousand three through October of two thousand sixteen, whereas without the persistent and astute guidance, insight, and leadership provided by Mr. Williams in bringing key Temple-based partners together for the advancement of the bioscience research and commercialization in Temple, consideration by the Texas Legislature in two thousand three for the establishment of the district. Whereas the Temple Health and Bioscience Economic Development District, under the leadership of Mr. Williams, has provided valuable assistance in establishing major institutions in Temple, including the Temple College Texas Bioscience Institute, the Texas A&amp;M Institute for Regenerative Medicine, and the Scott and Watt Cancer Research Institute. Whereas Mr. Williams led the successful two thousand nine effort to approve of taxing authority for the district, leading to the establishment of the Temple Health and Bioscience District Office and Laboratory Facility, and providing office and laboratory space for early-stage bioscience companies in Temple. And whereas through Mr. Williams' overall visionary guidance and leadership, the district now operates and maintains a highly successful bioscience incubator facility that provides a launchpad for the creation of a viable bioscience and biotech commercial sector in Temple. Now therefore, Daniel A. Dunn, Mayor of the City of Temple, does hereby recognize Wendell C. Williams for his persistent visionary and invaluable guidance and leadership as Chairman of the Board of the Directors of the Temple Health and Bioscience Economic Development District from the inception of the district until October two thousand sixteen, and for his commitment to betterment in all sectors of the City of Temple and our community, in testimony therefore, witnessed the hand and the seal of Temple this nineteenth day of January two thousand seventeen, and signed by Daniel A. Dunn, Mayor of the City of Temple. Wendell, it's an honor, as I said. You have provided leadership, direction, and lots of things in Temple, not just bioscience, but reinvestment was on your instrumental in getting that started, and you have started a lot of stuff and continue on in support of those, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much. Never hand me a microphone. Thank you very much, Perry. It is, this is very nice. It was unexpected, and I appreciate it, and it has been a fun ride with the Bioscience District. I'm staying on the board, I hope. I'm going to be up for election, but it was time to step down as chairman. We've got great board members, great executive staff, and I think it'll go forward for many, many years. And again, thank each and every one of y'all for this honor. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a consent agenda, and all items listed under this section are considered to be routine by the Temple City Council and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by the council, any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member. This is item, council, this is items A, or four A through four S. Are there any items that you wish to remove for separate consideration or discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem, cloud.
Moving on to the regular agenda, item number five, item number two zero one seven dash four eight two zero, first reading for, with the public hearing. Consider adopting an ordinance authorizing the annexation of sixty point three three acres of land in the Redding Roberts survey, abstract six ninety-two, Bell County, Texan, Texas, a portion of the eighty-six point nine one acre tract conveyed as tract four to Roy Scaff as the independent executor of the state of Lemnard Apt in document number two zero one six zero 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 nine two oh three, official public records of real property, Bell County, Texas. Mr. Chandler.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. As was indicated in the description, this is an annexation request for sixty point three three acres, and you can see here on the map, the crosshatched area that is part of that request, just south of FM ninety-three. This is part of a tract that already includes twenty-six point five eight acres within the city limits, and so this project is proposed just to the east of the Valley Ranch subdivision. And just to note that the applicant is planning on submitting, the applicant is planning on submitting a planned development district, single-family one zoning request at a later date. And so, by the state requirements, this is meeting the various steps required that started on November seventeenth before a petition approved by city council, and the municipal service plan was developed and circulated, and public hearings were held on December fifteenth and sixteenth. No issues by the relevant city departments, and of course, this is the first of two readings. And because you all have seen this actually a number of times, we've kept it short, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Counsel, are there any questions, comments, or discussions? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. There being none, I will close the public hearing, is that correct? And we will entertain a motion on item number five.
Motion to approve, item five is read.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem, cloud.
Aye.
Item number six, item number two zero one seven dash four eight two one, first reading in public hearing for Z F Y dash seventeen dash zero four. Consider adopting an ordinance authorizing rezoning from two-family zoning district to commercial zoning district, lot floor four, block eleven, Temple Heights subdivision located at one one zero seven South Fifty-third Street in Temple. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. Again, this item is scheduled for a second reading on February second. Just a vicinity map to acquaint you with the area. It's bordered by South Fifty-third Street and South Fifty-first Street, West Avenue K, and about mid-block between West Avenue K and West Avenue L, property shown by the hatching. Again, this is, this is a piece of about seven thousand square feet and is proposed for commercial zoning. It's anticipated to be the expansion of the adjacent automotive-related uses for Weisner Automotive, and is the third rezoning request along this block, along South Fifty-third Street, to commercial within the last four years. As you may recall, about a year ago, early part of two thousand sixteen, sixteen, the adjacent piece also before you to request a commercial zoning, and that was approved. This is the, shown by the, the red box is the piece before you today. Terms of the zoning, again, the two-family, there is two-family across, this is probably the remaining remnant of the two F within the immediate area, as well as to the, the east behind the alley, but the area is transitioning to the commercial, both the piece that was before you about a year ago, as well as additional pieces shown in, in the red with the zoning. Just want to call out real briefly, the, the arrows indicate the two pieces that were before you within the last four years. Terms of the future land use map, the underlying designation is auto-urban commercial, which is intended for areas of commercial use, does support the commercial zoning, and does allow the automotive-related uses, and does, the request does comply with the future land use map. Both water and sewer are available to the property. Terms of the thoroughfare plan, South Fifty-third Street specifically, as well as the other circulating and adjacent streets are local streets. The comprehensive plan, choices oh eight, specifically a land use policy number thirteen identifies that commercial development is primarily provided at major intersections or other appropriate locations along highway frontages. The UDC also supports for retail and service uses, better suited for local and collector The request does not comply with the thoroughfare plan, and the next, this slide right here, as part of your staff report package, we did provide this table, and the main takeaway with this table is that under the current two F zoning, anticipated peak traffic would either be for a single family at one dwelling unit per peak hour trip, or with the duplex zoning, it would be two, but certainly the main takeaway is that additional traffic would be generated onto the local streets as indicated by either automotive care center, service center, or even a lubrication vehicle stop that would generate the additional As you may recall from the rezoning last year, we did, staff had initiated a land use inventory to kind of show how the properties in the immediate area are transitioning, primarily have residential to the east, there are some residential across, but the area is primarily transitioning to the non-residential, including automotive uses, as indicated by the A. Just some photographs, both of the site and the surrounding area. This is the area of the expansion, and is currently being used as a parking lot. And looking to the north, adjacent to the, the area is the Weisner Automotive. To the south, again, this property specifically, the photograph on the left is the subject property from last year's rezoning, and further south, down South Fifty-third are also existing automotive uses. To the west are the single-family uses, residential uses. And to the east, along Fifty-first, are residential uses in association with the Baptist Church. This view, the photograph on the left, is looking between the backs of those properties, as well as the subject property noted by the arrow. And just another photograph, the bottom photograph, looking toward the residential uses across the alley. Terms of the comparison of the uses, again, the, the proposed commercial zoning does provide or allowed for a number of non-residential uses, specifically the major and minor vehicle repair and other vehicle service uses that would be anticipated to be developed with this piece of property. Current and proposed development standards, the main takeaway from this table would be the thirty, thirty-foot center line, front yard setback from center line. With the residential uses to the east, buffering and screening would be required and would be addressed during the building plan stage. Screening and buffering would consist of landscape, evergreen hedges rather, or a six-to-eight-foot high fence or wall. As part of the zoning notification or zoning process, eighteen notices of notification were sent out to property owners, six notices were returned. Those six notices were represented by two property owners, and all of those were returned in agreement. Terms of compliance, all but the thoroughfare plan do comply. Staff does recommend approval of the request from two-family to commercial, and at their December nineteenth meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted seven to zero to approve per staff's recommendation. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Counsel, any questions, comments, or discussion? At this time, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Being no comments, I will entertain a motion on item number six.
Make a motion, what's your?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem, cloud.
Aye.
Moving on to item number seven, number two zero one seven dash four eight two two, first reading in a public hearing for zoning F Y seventeen oh six. Consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning from the commercial zoning district to multifamily two zoning district on point nine two eight acres, lot one through six, point seven, Eastern Hillside Division located at seven fifteen North Twentieth Street. Ms. Redmond.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. This is scheduled for a second reading on February second of two thousand seventeen. To orient you to the site, you can see that M L K Junior Drive is here, and East Adams runs here, so the site is located on this red X, so it's kind of in the eastern part of town. The applicant slash property owner is Brad Dusick, who is here with us tonight. The site is approximate, it's just under one acre and is located in the Eastern Hills subdivision. There currently is an existing ten-unit apartment building, and again, the request tonight is for a rezoning from commercial to the multifamily two zoning district. So here are some site photos. This on the left is looking at the existing apartment building that is currently on the subject property. The property to the north of the subject property is vacant. To the south, there is an existing residence. You can see here that this is a driveway, an existing driveway into the subject property where there is a surface area parking lot. And then as well to the west, there is an existing residence. So currently, again, there is a two, ten-unit apartment building on the site. It is a one-story building. There are two service parking lots. There is vacant space at both the north and south portions of the property, and so the proposal, you, the proposal plans to utilize the vacant space located to the south, and for, within that space, an additional attached six-unit apartments, and so that would also be a one-story building, but it would not be attached to the existing ten-unit apartment building. So here's what's happening on the site currently. This is the, the existing apartment building, and then there's two surface parking lots, and so this is the portion I was referring to that proposes to utilize that portion of the property for an additional six-unit apartment building. This is the zoning map currently. You can see the subject property is zone commercial. It is proposed for MF two. To the north, south, and west is zone two F, and then to the east is zoned MF two. Here's the future land use map. You can see the subject property, as well as the entire surrounding properties, are all designated as an auto-urban residential designation in our future land use map. So what that designation generally means is for smaller, single-family lots. So this request is not compliant with the future land use map. However, there is an existing multifamily use on the property, so it would be consistent with what is currently happening on the property. Here's the thoroughfare plan. The subject property is accessed off of North Twentieth Street, and that is designated as a local street in our thoroughfare plan. So what that designation means is that a local street should have a fifty-foot right-of-way distance with a thirty-one-foot pavement distance. Currently, North Twentieth Street has approximately thirty-five feet of right-of-way with twenty feet of pavement, so therefore, it's not compliant with the thoroughfare plan. However, the existing and proposed units are, are what is considered a low-intensity apartment complex, and so there does not appear to be any created issues with this. Sewer and water are available to the site, so the proposal is compliant with our public facilities availability. And this is a table that compares the use for what's currently existing as far as zoning versus what's proposed, and just to hit on a few of the main differences, currently in a, the property is zone residential, or sorry, is zone commercial, which does not allow for residential uses in a commercial zoning district. However, with a multifamily two, there are residential uses allowed, such as the multifamily, which is existing on the property. Another big difference is commercial uses. Obviously, in a commercial zoning district, there are commercial uses allowed, and the proposed, no commercial uses are allowed. Another main difference is entertainment uses, and what's existing on the commercial zoning district, alcoholic beverage shells for on-premise consumption, so what would be considered something like a restaurant that sells alcohol would be allowed in the existing zoning district, but would be prohibited in the proposed. And same for restaurant uses, those are allowed in the commercial zoning district, but are not allowed in the proposed zoning district. So here is our two-hundred-foot buffer map. Twenty-nine notices were mailed out to property owners within the two- Twenty-nine notices were mailed out to property owners within the two-hundred-foot area of the subject property. One letter was returned for disagreement, and on December thirteenth, printed notice of this public hearing was advertised in the newspaper. So at their December nineteenth Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and as recommended by staff, the PNZ Commission recen, recommended approval for the rezoning based on the following compliance factors. One, surrounding zoning. Two, existing multifamily use on the property, and availability of public facilities to serve the subject property. So now we can move into questions and discussion.
Counsel, any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion on item number seven.
Motion to approve item seven is read.
Mayor Pro Tim, could you close the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, and need to close the public hearing at this time, and now I will entertain a motion on item number seven.
Now make a motion on item number seven.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Cloud.
Aye. It doesn't say on here to close it, so I didn't.
Just trying to read the script. Item number eight, first reading, public hearing, consider adopting an ordinance abandonment and conveyance of the entire twenty-foot wide alley in block three of the Keaton Edition subdivision, City of Temple, Bell County, Texas. Again, Ms. Redmond.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim and counsel. This is set for first reading tonight, January nineteenth, and a second reading for February second. The applicant is Mr. Teeters, who is with us here tonight. This is a vicinity map, just to orient you to where the site is. I-thirty-five is located right kind of down the middle of the, the vicinity map here. Temple High School is located to the south of the subject alley, so we are zooming into this section of the city right here. So this is the subject alley, highlighted in yellow on the surveyor's sketch on the right, and then a, a photo looking north, down North Thirty-first Street with the subject property to the left. You can see it's currently undeveloped property. So again, we are here for requested alley abandonment and conveyance, twenty-foot wide with a total of just of, of point-one-nine-six acres. The applicant owns the property bounding to the west, to the east, and to the north ends, and the city owns the property to the south, but has no interest in retaining the alley. If approved, the applicant will own all of block three in the Keaton Edition, and the applicant is aware that the terms of the sale would allow construction of buildings within what is the, the alley, which we're abandoning tonight, because there are no existing utility service lines located there. So staff contacted utility providers and Public Works Department. They confirmed that there no, are no utilities, and that the alley may be conveyed without reserving utility or drainage easements. No objections were made because it's not needed for public services or access, and there would be a fiscal impact. If approved by counsel, the applicant would be able to purchase the property from the city for two thousand dollars. This was recommended, this price was recommended by a third-party appraiser. So staff recommends approval of the requested alley abandonment and conveyance. And we can move into questions and comments. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Is, are there any plans for Thirty-third Street to be developed at any point in time, and are there any utilities within that right-of-way?
Um, not to my knowledge, but I could defer that to somebody else who might know. Does ma? Yes, Thirty-third. Thirty-third would be right here.
Okay. We, we don't have any projects currently planned or funded to do any expansions or redevelopment of those streets. So, no.
Questions? At this time, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Thank you. And no further comments, I will entertain a motion for item.
I move to approve item eight.
Second.
Have a motion in second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Cloud.
Aye.
Item number nine is a public hearing, zoning case fiscal year seventeen-oh-five, which has been withdrawn by the applicant, and at this time, we are scheduled for a public hearing, which we will open the public hearing since it's been posted. However, no discussion or action by the council will be taken. Ma'am.
My name is Betty Lewis. I live at sixty-eight nineteen Jupiter Drive in Temple. We did receive note, or through word of mouth received notice that it was withdrawn. I'm just wondering what will happen if it's reapplied, or is it posted in the paper again? Will it get the same designation of seventeen-oh-five, or will I have to look for another one?
Brian, do you want to take the question?
Um, yes, it is withdrawn, it has been withdrawn by the applicant, and it would need to go back through the entire discussion process.
Back through planning and zoning?
Yes.
And it'll be posted in the paper?
Yes, ma'am.
Will it get a new number or the same number?
Um, it would get a new number unless it was, I mean, it has been withdrawn by the applicant, so they, there's no proposal that I'm aware of to, to actually amend it at this time. It's been withdrawn.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I knew what was going to happen to it, because we had a lot of people scheduled to be here. My husband, he left, he's sitting in my car, but I just wanted to know what was going to happen from here on out.
So we'll have to go through the same notice process as it did the first time?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
I assume they will get notices just like the process. Right, okay.
I will now close the public hearing, and for item number nine, and no motion is necessary as the applicant has withdrawn his request. That brings us to item number ten, which are the resolutions. Consider adopting resolutions, and there are four parts to this, and I will read all four parts of it, you know, with, I believe, one discussion item. Item number twenty-seventeen dash eighty-five twenty-four R, approving the final plat of Santa Fe Plaza West, an eleven-point-oh-oh-seven acre, nine-lot, three-block, non-residential subdivision, being a replat which embraces multiple lots within the original town of Temple subdivision, and Moore's Railway Edition subdivision plats. Item B is twenty-seventeen dash eighty-five twenty-five R, authorization or authorizing abandonment of all or portions of service alleyways originally dedicated within the original town of Temple and Moore's Railway Edition subdivision plats. Item number C is twenty-seventeen dash eighty-five twenty-six R, authorizing abandonment of all or portions of public right-of-way originally dedicated as West Avenue A, West Avenue B, South Fifth Street, South Seventh Street, and South Ninth Street within the original town of Temple subdivision plat. And D, twenty-seventeen dash eighty-five twenty-seven R, authorizing abandonment of all or portion of public right-of-way originally dedicated as West Avenue A, South Ninth Street, and South Eleventh Street within the Moore's Railway Edition subdivision plat. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, City Council. Again, I'm pleased to be able to present this to you this evening, as this is a City of Temple-owned property as well as a city project. Being a resolution, this is tonight's only scheduled meeting and would not require a second reading. Just some, a brief background, and I'll combine, I'll have combined discussion on the abandonments as well as the plat. Again, this is an approximately eleven-acre, nine-lot, three-block, non-residential subdivision, and is a replat of two separate existing subdivision plats. The final plat itself has gone through the development review process and was deemed administratively complete on December fifteenth. The overall zoning for the property is Central A, and again, this is a, a city, city-owned property, and is ultimately going to be developed as a city-owned plaza. The replat itself, the plat that is before you tonight, is the first stage of implementation of the City Council-approved Santa Fe Plaza master plan, and does include the future administrative offices for the Temple Chamber of Commerce, the Temple Economic Development Corporation, and the Temple Independent School District. The plat as proposed does require right-of-way and alleyway abandonment, and tonight, before you, again, are two separate applications, both plat and the abandonment. Again, there are four separate resolutions, which you have already read into the record. Sidewalk and other pedestrian amenities are proposed and will be shown on building plans, and these are consistent with the City Council-approved master plan. There is an additional piece that is in the process of being acquired by the city. When that is acquired and becomes city-owned property, future replat of the Santa Fe Plaza West final plat will be required, and additional abandonments may be necessary as part of that. Both the replat and the abandonment would require City Council approval and would go through the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then ultimately to the City Council for review. Both wastewater and water are available through a number of lines and water lines. And again, the final plat, City Council is the final plat authority. There's one resolution, and City Council approval is required since the city is the property owner. No exceptions to the UDC were identified or necessary. Three separate resolutions were identified and described for the right-of-way and alleyway abandonments. Just an overall site plan of the proposed development, again, just to orient, Whistlestop Park on the left, and we've got West Avenue A, as well as West Avenue B, Santa Fe Depot in the south, the rail yard, and the proposed offices for the TSD Administrative Building, as well as the workforce development for both, housing both the TEDC as well as the Chamber of Commerce. The current configuration is on the left, showing the, the two existing recorded subdivisions and the proposed final plat with the realignment, as well as the included information of the alleyway abandonments and right-of-way abandonments that would, that are before you tonight. The utility plan that does show the wastewater, as well as the water lines that are available. And just some photographs, on the top is a staff's attempt at a panorama to kind of show the, the broad area. Call your attention on the left, the Whistlestop Playground, and West Avenue B directly in front, within the photograph, and to the far left is the Santa Fe Depot. And a photograph on the left from, on, along West Avenue B with the, the trail behind in this, looking east, and from the South Third Street overcrossing, looking west. Again, the Santa Fe Depot in the immediate foreground on the picture on the right. Staff does recommend approval of the final plat, as well as right-of-way and alleyway abandonments for the Santa Fe Plaza West as presented in the item description. At their December nineteenth meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted seven to zero to prove, approve the final plat per staff's recommendation. The right-of-way and alley abandonments were discussed, but they did not take formal action on the abandonments. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Counsel, any questions or comments? There being no further comments, I will attain, entertain a motion on item number ten.
Motion to approve item number ten, A through D.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Cloud.
Aye.
Thank you, and we made it through, and hopefully, the real mayor will be back next, next to council meeting, so, thank you all for being here.